I'm going to call the order, the Town of Gilbert Planning Commission Regular Meeting. The first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone can still please stand and face the flag.
Yeah.
Chairman Anderson?
Yep.
Vice Chair Bloomfield?
Here.
David Cavaney? Noah Munt?
Here.
Scott September?
Here.
John Simon?
Here.
Les Smith? Philip Alabrande?
Here.
Nathan Mackin. Thank you, Chair. You have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Next will be approval of the agenda during the self-study session. It's been discussed to take items 18, 19, GP 19-11, the Murphy, Z 19-23, the Murphy, and items 20, GP 19-12, Z 19-24, items 20, 21, Al Vista Square from the non-consent calendar to the, I'm sorry, from the, yeah, non-consent calendar to the consent calendar. Actually, I'm looking at 17, too. That one's been requested we continue to next month. We can move that one over as well, right? Okay, so let's move item 17, UP 18-42, A.D. Santan over to the consent calendar. Is there anybody in the public that wish to speak on any of those items before we vote on that? Not seeing any. I do have a comment card here on item 12, so we're going to pull 12 off the consent calendar and put that onto non-consent. Vice Chair, can I get a motion on the agenda, please?
Certainly. I move to approve the agenda as discussed, pulling item 12 off the consent agenda and adding 17, 18, 19, 20, and 21 onto the consent agenda.
Motion for approval is ready. Second?
Second.
Second, we'll give it to Commissioner Munt. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Calendar is approved. Next will be communications from citizens. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the town but not on the agenda. The commission responds as limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Does anybody from the public wish to address the commission on anything right now? Not seeing any. Report from Council Liaison on current events. Councilwoman Peterson.
Thank you, Chairman. Bridgette Peterson for the Gilbert Town Council here. You should have all found a handy-dandy folder at your seats, and they're a little gift from us. They have the logo celebrating the centennial for the Town of Gilbert that we will be celebrating in 2020. So I hope you enjoy those and use them in good health from us. I think the card was signed by myself and Mayor Daniels this evening. We appreciate all you do as commissioners here in our town. Just a couple of things to report. We have what I expect to be a really fun evening coming up on Friday night with Gilbert Fire and Rescue versus Gilbert Police playing softball at Cactus Yards from 5:30 to 6:30, followed by a kickball game with kids. So if you come with your children, they'll be able to play with the police officers and firefighters after they play softball. It's free for everybody to get in. We're just asking for donations to both of the departments for their clothing and toy drives. If you bring an unwrapped present and put it in the box when you attend. Starting on Friday the 6th, you'll be able to attend Riparian After Dark from 5:30 to 9:00 p.m. at the Riparian Preserve Park located at Guadalupe and Greenfield Roads. That will be held the 6th, 7th, 13th, 14th, 20th, and 21st. It's a great event. If you've never been, you can go walk around the Riparian, and it's lit up with holiday decorations, and they do something different every year, and they add new pieces, and they have luminarias, and they have live singers, and it's really a lot of fun at the holidays. This year, Gilbert's been blessed again to have the giving machines located under the Gilbert Water Tower. Last year, we had the machines. They were only located in five cities across the world, and Gilbert raised $860,000 in our two machines. This year, we have four machines located there, and they're located in 10 cities across the world, but Gilbert was lucky enough to have them for the second time. You can donate to five local charities, or you can buy a couple of chickens for somebody in another part of the coun, in another part of the world. So I think it's a really great way to be able to give back someplace without having to go very far. Just come to downtown Gilbert, have dinner, and go swipe your card in the machine, and you get to pick what you'd like to donate, and it's all different levels of denominations of money. So you can fund $5 up. If you want to give a cow, you can give a cow. Today I was there, you can give a piglet. I might have to go back and give a piglet because I think that sounds fun. Starting in January, Gilbert Town Council meetings will no longer be held on Thursday evenings. We will be moving to Tuesday evenings. We've decided to make that switch to go along with the fact that our staff works Monday through Thursday, and we were always here until 8, 9, 10 o'clock on Thursday nights. And when business gets accomplished on Thursday night, everybody goes home, and they're off on Friday, and you can't reach anybody to get anything done till Monday. So we think this might be a much better system for our staff. They may actually get out of work at 6:00 p.m. on Thursdays instead of being here, hanging around here with us for council meetings. So keep that in mind. We will typically be meeting on the first and third Tuesday of the month, every month. And I wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and I look forward to seeing you in January. I know you have a second meeting this month in December, but I have like three other things at the same exact time, so I don't think that I'll make that one. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We have a second meeting this month?
Yes, Chairman. I was going to do that under my manager's report. We do have the special meeting on the general plan on December 18th at 6:00 p.m. at the Southwest Regional Library. We have to bring that general plan to two separate meetings at two different locations. So that's why we have the special one on the 18th at the Southeast Regional Library.
Okay, thank you. Everybody got that on your calendar. Next will be public hearing consent items. All items listed below are considered the public hearing consent calendar. The commission may by a single motion approve any number of items where, after opening the public hearing, no person requests the item be removed from the consent calendar. If such a request is made, the commission shall then withdraw the item from the public hearing consent calendar for the purpose of public discussion and separate action. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar and approved under a single motion. The items we'll be voting on will be item 11, DR 19-115, Perfect Granite, Perfection Granite; item 13, DR 19-136, Flower Child; item 14, UP 19-40, Power and Ray Storage Outdoor, along with UP 19-41, Power and Ray Storage Indoor; DR 19-119, Power and Ray Storage. That one is being requested to be continued to, all 13, 14, 15, 16 are requested to be continued to January. Item 17, Use Permit, 18-42, A.D. Santan, also being requested to be continued to January; item 18, GP 19-11, the Murphy; Z 19-23, the Murphy; VP 19-12, Al Vista Square; Z 19-24, Al Vista Square. Somebody in the public here to speak on any of those items? Well, let me open. Yes? No? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Vice Chair, can I get a motion, please?
Before I do that, can I make one question? Normally, we have to vote on the general plan before we vote on the zoning. Do we have to do that? In this case, it's all on the consent. That's okay to run it that way? Or do we need to have two different? Okay. All right. I move to approve the consent agenda for items just discussed, items 11, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19, 20, and 21.
Motion for approval is ready. Second?
Second.
Commissioner Alabrande on the second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. Now, we'll move along to public hearing non-consent items. Non-consent public hearing items will be heard at an individual public hearing and will be acted upon by the commission by a separate motion. During the public hearings, anyone wishing to comment in support of or in opposition to a public hearing item may do so. If you wish to comment on a public hearing item, you must fill out a public comment form indicating the item number on which you wish to be heard. Once the hearing is closed, there will be no further public comment unless requested by a member of the commission. The item that we'll be hearing will be item 12, DR 19-120, Bill Look Santan, Faze. Nathan, please.
My apologies. I thought maybe the neighbor would come up first. So, item number 12, and I know the public wants to speak, questions related to existing wells on the neighboring properties to the west and some lighting. So I'd be happy to kind of discuss that further. I don't know where my PowerPoint is here. Wow, that's weird. Anyway, we'll find that. But I know they can come up and talk about that. I think you have an addendum on your dais regarding the well situation and the applicant, and I think the neighbors are comfortable with our engineers working with the applicant to try and reduce and minimize these impacts as much as possible. For example, dry wells on the western property boundary close to their existing wells, things of that nature. So I think they're comfortable with that condition. Lighting was also a concern. The applicant, you know, through their photometric plan demonstrates that they comply with town codes. However, I think the neighbor would like some additional shielding and minimization of the lights, at least on the western property boundary where the landscape buffer is, and I think the applicant's happy to do that. So that may be an additional condition of some sort, whether it's reducing the intensity of the lights or additional shielding or something of that nature that I think would, whatever the applicant would be and neighbor would be comfortable with. But I think they're open to that. I think those are the primary issues with the, with the neighbor.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any comments or questions for staff at this time?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think we're good up here. Does the applicant wish to make a presentation? If you can state your name, address for the record, and you will have 10 minutes.
Good evening. For your records, John Mahoney, 850 West Elliott Road, Suite 108, Tempe, Arizona. The project before you tonight is an expansion really to the existing Loop project across the street. By way of general information, it may be reassuring for everyone to realize that the building is, primary use will be inventory management of cars. So he'll have his employees doing a lot of online shopping for cars across the country that he purchases, reconditions, and then sells. He does not do reconditioning work in this building. He predominantly will be buying like-new cars, 5,000 to 10,000 miles, and he'll be examining them, determining what sort of reconditioning work they would need. And typically, that's more body dents, dings, upholstery scratches. Those cars are then moved into the existing building across the street where the reconditioning takes place. Then they're brought to this building after that's all done and photographed, and either sell, be selling them on his sales lot in Gilbert, or he may be shipping some of those cars to his other facilities around the valley. So I wanted to just kind of give you a little bit of background as to how the building was going to operate. It's not really a mechanical type of repair business that's taking place there. Nathan made us aware this morning that the neighbors had two concerns. We weren't aware of them prior to today, but the one being the adjacency of dry wells to the neighbor's well site, and the other being the lighting. So I'll address the well site. The civil engineer from when we learned that this morning has been doing some research, and there's a little bit of conflicting information between Arizona Water Resources records and the county assessors as to the exact location of the well site. Obviously, our neighbors know where the wellhead is, and staff has been researching the separations and all of that criteria that were required to meet, and we will meet or exceed that. We may, in fact, already, we may have to move a couple of dry wells. We'll also, given a little more time to explore it, we'll, we'll look at other options for where to put that underground retention on the site so that it's not even near the west property line. Unfortunately, the site slopes to the southwest corner naturally anyway, so we don't really want to build that grade up adjacent to the neighbors because that's going to raise our lights and our building and everything else with it. So given some time to explore exactly where the well is and our design solutions, I'm comfortable we can come up with something certainly that staff would approve and that the neighborhood would be assured that we're going to be a good neighbor to them as well. We don't want anything in their well any more than they want anything in their well, obviously. So we'll need to study that. Our lighting across the board in this development is held at a 14-foot height, and our light level is quite low. The height of the fixtures is 14 feet. We're at zero or less than zero at the western property line with what we have submitted. And our, just to give you an idea, the illumination levels across the entire site, our average lighting level is 4.6-foot candles, and our maximum is 18.9. So in a just momentary conversation before the hearing with, with the neighbors, they were, their concern is, isn't, doesn't sound like it's as much with light spill onto their property. It's looking up and seeing the glare of the full cutoff lens. So I said what we would do is we'd, we'd put what they call a house shield around the backside of those fixtures. You've probably seen those on other projects. You've certainly probably seen them on, on public streetlights, where if you've got a streetlight next to your house, the staff will come out and they'll put that house shield. It doesn't actually change the photometric of what's happening on your property as much as you can't see any glare from that fixture. So we would, we would certainly be happy to do the house shield as well on those fixtures on the western boundary line. So if anyone has had any questions or would like any further information?
Does anybody have any questions on the applicant? Oh, all right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I do have a comment card here from the public. Jim, is it Maroni? Just state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner, for hearing me. Jim Maroni. I'm a neighbor to the adjacent property, representing 147th Place Trust, as what the property name is in. That being said, the well site, the wellhead, is actually in the corner of my property. I do not own the well, but it serves six houses, six properties, nine, nine properties along, all the way along the west border of that. There's no other way to get water to our homes. There's not water down our public, our road in front of our houses, city water. So we're very protective of that. I do appreciate what is, what the addendum that has been written to address our concerns of protecting that well, and it sounds like there'll be provisions for that. The light fixtures, as John Mahoney had mentioned, it sounds like we've come to a resolution there with not only full cutoff fixtures but a shielded fixture. The current photometrics that were proposed do show light spillage over the, the common wall between the two properties. And so when I'm sitting on my back porch, I really don't want to see a light fixture. It's already, you know, some of us have been there since it was still farm fields, and it's hard enough to accept what we're going on. So we, we're not opposed to the development of it. We just like some considerations of, of our well and, and our lights. I guess the only other real issue is the usage of the property prior to construction or even during construction and dust considerations. There's already been some parking that has been being done on that property, and the dust levels are just huge. We would like to confirm that no parking will be done until that is an improved surface of some sort because that has been an issue already. That's, you know, until they get into, in the construction documents and, and work out the details, I think that's really all we can address at this point. And, you know, we, as property owners, we're concerned about noise and the number of semis and the time of day that they're going to be dropping off all these cars and those kind of things right on our property line. It's already kind of an issue that we don't like to deal with, but I don't know what can be done about that other than voicing our concern over those things. So, thank you for hearing me.
Thank you very much for your time. I'm going to ask the applicant, do they care to respond to Mr. Maroni's comments? If so, you would have five minutes.
Thank you. With regard to lighting, the only thing I'm confused about is the photometric indicating light spill onto their property. I don't believe that's the case. Is it Nathan?
So here's your photometric. I've actually blown it up.
Right, so those are zeros along the west, as you can see. I know there's a lot of numbers there. And when we, we checked that in the computer file before this evening, and those, those points that that, those zeros are hitting are actually seven feet inside the wall. With regard to transports, of course, none of us, probably even Mr. Luke himself, doesn't necessarily control transport drivers because they're all independent haulers, but if you were to see the overall plan, the existing facility, there's a gate on the west side of his existing facility with a guard station. The transports are bringing the cars into that site, unloading them, and then going out a gate on the east side in the adjacent property that's already been developed. So I don't believe the transports are really going to be on the site. I, Mr. Luke could speak to operational things better than I could, but we really haven't designed for a transport route. Certainly, we have fire lanes and trash lanes and things of that nature, but we've not really designed for, for a route. We were highly conscious of it on the existing project, that those transports not have to make turns inside his property because it's very difficult to do. It takes up a lot of space for them to turn, and the space, of course, is valuable to all dealers. So hopefully that is helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Nathan, can you come back up, please? So it looks like we have kind of the main concerns of the neighbors addressed, one being the lighting. And with the addendum here that was brought up to us tonight regarding the drainage, the dry wells, does that address the concerns of Mr. Maroni?
Chairman Anderson, yeah, I believe that's, that's sufficient for the wells. That's essentially, you know, working with our development engineer. That's sufficient enough for them to, the applicant, to ensure the applicant works with the town to try and minimize those impacts, you know, like John Mahoney mentioned, you know, moving the location as best they can of the underground storage, or whether it's pushing dry wells further to the east, whatever those solutions are. That's, that's what that condition's meant to address at time of CDs, so they'll need to work that out with their engineers prior to CDs. With regard to the lighting, I would suggest we add another condition noting what Mr. Maroni, Mahoney Maroni gets me confused, but Mr. Maroni said about the, the housing, you know, increasing the, the light fixtures, at least along the western property line. I think you could kind of, well, actually here. You could, you could see where in this, you could see where those light fixtures are. So these are the light fixtures in question. I don't know if any of the other light fixtures would be necessary for the housing, but I just want to make sure there was a condition added in addition that, that required, you know, some additional shielding through housing of those light fixtures, at least in particular, so that they didn't see lights. And then, I think that's it. I think those are the only conditions that we would need to add.
There was a question from Mr. Maroni about dust and dust control and traffic on the site. Is it being utilized right now?
I, I'm told by the neighbors that it is. I don't know. Maybe the applicant knows better. As I think I mentioned to one of the neighbors, yeah, she knows better than me, lives out there. That is, you know, our Maricopa County Environmental Services is, their PM 10 regulations and those types of things would be the one they have to enforce if they are violating any of those regulations for dust and, and those types of things. So that's what I would suggest in terms of an enforcement mechanism in lieu of when this would be constructed. Obviously, this is going to be concrete. There won't be much dust after that, but in the meantime, you know, I think that's an enforcement mechanism.
I'm just wondering if it's open access, if it's teenagers out there having a good time and doing a brody, you know, because...
That I don't know of. That, you know, not using the, you know, using the site without, improper use of the site would be a code enforcement issue if, if that's what is happening. They, you know, that would be the mechanism for the neighbors to report to the town.
If, if they are, it's as simple as hauling in a bunch of ABC, which they're going to use underneath the asphalt anyway, and just get that and lay it down over the soils that are there. So, anyway.
I don't know if a condition in the DR would do anything.
We can't do that, yeah.
Address that, but there are, you know, mechanisms in place to, to address that.
Glad they brought it up so that the owner could hear about it. So, okay.
So the only thing I would suggest is we add one more condition about the lights.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have one thing.
Let me share this with you.
So, back to the dust. Is it, so it's incumbent on Gilbert code enforcement, or is it incumbent on the neighbors to contact Dust Control at Maricopa County?
Commissioner September, my understanding would be incumbent upon the neighbors to report the, the violation, but I guess I could contact our code to see if that, is that right? I'm giving a thumbs up, so.
For, for Dust Control, it would be the county, and for any lighting issue, they'd have to contact code enforcement.
And that...
But the neighbors have to do it, yep.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure the applicant, or the neighbors leave with the knowledge of, you know, what the path is to deal with the dust that's happening now.
Can they control that? Because I know once they get in construction, they do have to go to the county and pull a Dust Control permit to control that during construction. But how do you, how do you control that when you just have a vacant lot? Because a good portion of Arizona is vacant and dust kicks up. Like, can you go to the county and is the county going to be able to enforce that?
Yeah, again, right. The, I mean, I'm speaking just from base knowledge, you know, I'm not an expert on it, but Environmental Services with, with the county, they, you know, you'll see those trucks around, and if they get violations reported to them, much like our code enforcement, they would go out and, I mean, I, I know from a number of sites, you know, even, even town sites where it's a vacant piece of property and they're doing something on it, they'll, they'll have code, they'll have...
Well, that's the key point right there, where something's going on, on construction, but is... but is the complaint that it's just vacant right now? And if it stays vacant within the next 10 years, that the landowner has to control the dust on it?
No, it sounded to me like the complaint was that there's somebody actively driving trucks and unloading cars from those trucks on the property, which is creating the dust issue.
Okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha. So is that the case that's going on out there? Your observations?
So that...
Oh, we don't need to see pictures, just...
It's been used as a parking lot right now.
Okay.
Unpaved.
Okay, okay.
Fair enough.
So... There you go.
No dust the last two weeks, huh? Yeah.
I have a look at it as two... That's two part. One is the use of the site, which the town would have to... The town code enforcement department would be the ones to say, "You're not legally using the site." And then, two, it would be the dust control, that would be the county. So it... My understanding is it would be incumbent upon these property owners to report that to those agencies, and then enforcement would need to occur. That would be the process.
Okay, so if that's the process, this is a design review case, there's nothing we can really stipulate on that.
I got an attorney here.
Yeah, the neighbors would just have to contact the county and file a complaint. There's nothing we can really do about it. Okay. Does that... Understand the process with that? Okay. All right. Does anybody else have anything else?
I was just going to say as a clarification, wouldn't they contact the Town of Gilbert for if the usage is... Yeah, so if there was... If there's an issue related to the usage that you believe is being misused, then contact the town as well, so. I... Yeah. Don't use the nine, they stay on the line then. I did it once as a kid.
Excuse me, Chairman. You can download the 311 app, and you can even upload the photos that you have and be as descriptive as possible as you can and put it in as a code enforcement issue, and they will come and look into it. If you don't want to download the app, you can go to the Town of Gilbert website and search for Gilbert 311, and you can always do it from the website, too.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anything more that we want to discuss regarding design review? Okay, thank you, Nathan. I'll close the public hearing and bring it back up to the dais. Is any further discussion on this? No? Okay, so I'd like to entertain a motion. We do have an addendum here. Do we need to read the condition of the addendum?
Chairman, and I believe you have the addendum, and there was also a request to add an additional stipulation regarding the house shields on the lights.
Yeah, I was going to get to that as well.
Okay.
So does anybody want to take a stab at for motion? And you said they do have to read the condition. So item five, would they need to work that, or can they just address the addendum and then add the sixth stipulation?
I would probably read the addendum and add the sixth stipulation.
Since you have the only copy, and pass it over to me, I'll take a look.
Okay, and I think I even wrote down number six there for you, too.
Okay, very good. All right. Chairman, I move to approve item 12, DR 19-120, with the recommendations listed in the staff report, and the addendum has an item number five, which says, "The Town of Gilbert Engineering Division shall continue to coordinate with the applicant developer to ensure that any regulatory requirements related to spacing between dry wells and existing private well facilities directly adjacent to the subject site are addressed before permitting." And item number six, additional shielding, house shielding of light fixtures along the west side of the property.
Motion for approval of the addendum with the two stipulations, is there any discussion on what was read? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ale Brandi. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, say nay. Item 12 is approved. And I'd like to thank the neighbors for coming out and voicing your concerns tonight. Hopefully, we address them for you tonight. Let's move along to admin items. Item 22, planning commission minutes. Consider approval of the minutes of the study session and regular meeting of November 6, 2019. Vice Chair, can I get a motion?
Chairman, I move to approve the meeting minutes of November 6 meeting.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Munt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Minutes are approved. Item 23, report from chairman and members of the commission on current events. I have nothing to report, does anybody else?
Yeah, I actually do. I figure we have a, you know, skeleton crew here, but I'll share a story. So I went out to the ninja park, it's brand new, and I brought my kids, and we're really into the American Ninja Warrior, and we love it. And so I somehow confounded my own abilities into thinking that I could go on to the swinging monkey bar wheels, and as I then did it with my right arm and went to twist my massive torso upon an unwarmed shoulder, I'm getting an MRI tomorrow. So I just want to put this out as a warning to all, that if you try to decide you're going to be a Ninja Warrior, please warm up at the bare minimum, so. But the park is awesome, so, yeah.
That is a great warning, thank you. Report from Planning Services Manager on current events.
Thank you, Chair. I've already mentioned the special meeting on the 18th at the Southeast Regional Library, and the 60-day review period for the general plan ends this Friday, so if there's anybody that still wishes to comment on the plan, again, it ends, comments are collected until Friday. Thank you.
All right, thank you. At this point, I'd like to wish everybody Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, and we'll see everybody in 2020. Adjourned. Ah, well, oh, I meant here. We'll see everybody at the library on the 18th. Thank you.